... one, which probably has gotten creamed in the last few weeks. The rain and the wind. They didn't call us until us destroyed.
Yeah, so have you been to St. Martin?
Every year for the last 25.
Okay, so a few times.
Once by boat. We took our boat from Maine to St. Martin.
A sailboat?
Yeah.
From Maine to St. Martin?
That was cool.
Wow.
That's exciting.
How big is your boat?
That one is 44, but we got rid of that one. That was a big boat.
That is a good sized boat.
Old.
Yeah.
Old, but big. And that was great.
I bet.
Good experience.
Hug the coast?
Hug me?
Did you hug the coast?
No.
No?
On the way back, we did.
Yeah.
Like, we used that, you know, called waterway.
In a coastal. Yeah, it's supposed to be nice.
But you had to go from St. Martin up through the Exumas, up through the Abacos, through the Bahamas into Florida.
How long did that trip take you, down and back, huh?
We left in November and got back in May.
Wow.
Just spent the summer in Maine. Those were in the good old days.
Yeah. I know, right?
Did they indicate to you whether they'd be coming tonight?
They didn't specify, no.
All right, 7 o'clock. I'm gonna declare the meeting opened. I guess we pledge the flag.
Let's do it.
Watch out for these chairs.
These chairs are tight.
There's a legion.
Ladies to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Oh, the air, it's kind of...
I wanna take the vault.
A little cool out of there.
Yeah, air conditioning's on.
I guess, right?
Not sure why. David Kent?
Here.
Stephanie Halter?
Here.
Butch Cushing? Tom McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Peter Julia?
Present.
Malik Hammond?
Here.
All right, first item on the agenda is a review of our minutes. So if you could find that. It's the one that's got the seal on the top.
We'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Second.
Second.
People say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. We have an application for rehearing. Before we launch into that, I'd like to tell you that our zoning ordinance says that applications for rehearing are governed by statute 677-2. And I'll read you the first few lines of it, which I think are relevant for tonight. Within 30 days after any order or decision by the zoning board of adjustment, or any decision of the local legislative body or board of appeals in regards to its zoning, the selectmen, any party to the action or proceedings, or any person directly affected thereby may apply for a rehearing in respect to any matter determined in the action or proceeding, or covered or included in the order specifying in the motion for the rehearing the grounds therefore. The board of adjustment, board of appeals, or the local legislative body may grant such a rehearing if, in its opinion, this is important, good reason therefore is stated in the motion. This a 30-day time limit shall approve or disapprove the application. We are now within the 30-day time period. It goes on to say in the next 677-3 that every ground, let's see. In a motion for rehearing shall set forth fully every ground upon which it is claimed that the decision or order complained of is unlawful or unreasonable. Okay. So we have to look at what they've asked for and decide tonight whether we're gonna grant a rehearing. And if it were to be granted, it would be at the March meeting. We're not deciding anything tonight. We can say, let's give them a rehearing. Let's deny them a rehearing. Whatever the board feels.
And there's no finding of facts.
Hug me?
There's no finding of facts.
No, just whether, we can look at what we've done, and if we think we haven't done it correctly or found the facts that we should have found based on their application to us, then we can grant them a rehearing and try to fill the voids or correct the errors. The first thing they've asked for, and it's a one-page, asks for requests for a hearing on a special exception by the zoning board of adjustment of the town of Plymouth for the property located at 2 and 4 Gould Terrace. Everybody got that page? As I, the first paragraph says, "The denial of the special exception was stated as being because there was insufficient information provided to address the concerns raised by the zoning board of adjustment, and the decision was unlawful in that the board must make specific findings as to whatever was presented, and it failed to do so."
I think they got us confused with the planning board.
Yeah, we don't give advice.
Insufficient information, because it was missing from the application.
In fact, you can, isn't it true, you can go to the planning board and you can ask for an informational?
Absolutely.
Where they explain to you in detail. They educate you in how to prepare for their meeting. So I guess the question would be, should we have denied it because they didn't present us with what we needed to make a decision?
Well, you know, they could read the questions that we had to answer, and they asked us to evaluate what of the lot was the size and, you know, that this could be comfortable. And they've got two homes. How they got, yeah, the lot is not probably due, but up in the back there. They've got two houses. They're both giving up land. They're talking about leasing land off-site. And we don't really understand about what size they are. And we briefly touched on, you know, how many people were in those. You know, that it, that was the hard part, I saw.
We didn't know.
It really would need a surveyor to show setbacks.
We didn't know what the setbacks were.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you just speculated, we can't...
I'd point something else out, too. I had the occasion to go to a planning board meeting, between our meeting and now. And it was raised to me that this should go to the planning board first and then come to us for a special exception. Not a special exception and then to the planning board. Because it has to pass the planning board, which looks at things like design.
Right.
And setbacks and all those other things. And is it accurate that this has never been to the planning board?
It has not been to the planning board at this time, no.
At any time, do you know of?
No, not that I'm aware of, this particular request.
So that's a double problem.
Well, it's not required that they go to the planning board, but it certainly, that's a lot of our referrals come from the planning board. When they discover things like this from the certified map, from the, you know...
And it could come from the planning board two different ways. It could come from a denial at the planning board, in which case they appeal to us. Or it could come to us because it passes the planning board, and then it needs a special exception.
Exception, yeah.
So there's two different ways that it could come to us, from the planning board. I, you know, did you advise them about that at all, do you know?
So, you know, we did speak about that to some extent, not in great length. But, you know, that generally it was considered whether, you know, that sort of, they decided they wanted to apply for special exception first, you know, get the approval for the use prior to any design work. And with the, my understanding was that the, with the lot being pre-existing, or the facility being pre-existing, we'd have to look at whether it would trigger site plan review or not, under this circumstance.
The facility is just a piece of each lot.
Yeah.
There's no facility down there as in one, even though they own the two of them, and they've had a treatment like that. But technically, it's a piece of each lot. You'd have to deed, you know, or give your lease agreement would be coming from Lot 3, Lot 4, and Lot 2.
That makes sense, Tom. The other issue, I can't agree with the pre-existing item. Back in 1967, when this was adopted, I don't believe that existed as a parking lot. In no number of years, as use of a parking lot, grandfathered it as a parking lot. They created a parking lot without planning board approval. That's fundamentally what they've done.
Yeah. Anyhow.
So, we'll look at the three paragraphs. First says, "We had a duty to give them information." It's unreasonable because the parking lot exists, is the second one. Number three answers some of your issues, Tom. That they're prepared to show us some of those things now.
Yeah, well, you know, when they do that, they may come to a new conclusion themselves. Because it's not until you get a surveyor out there and you find out where your pins actually are, and what the setbacks look like, and what the different right-of-ways are, what else, I mean, there's no research into that much.
Although, number three on the more detailed outline?
The variance one?
It's the request, it's the same request, but it's the multi-page, where it has bullet points for 1 and 2 specifically. But in 3, neither one are dated. Neither one are dated, so I don't know which one came first. I'm assuming.
That's right.
But number 3, it says that, "We'll provide a more detailed plan if the rehearing is granted." As if, I'm not really sure if that plan is already laid out.
I think they would have brought it up if it was, but, you know.
And presented.
That's right. They are making, they are making a promise. The funny thing about this is that it actually showed up in the minutes, was to, you said this to the cap, incomplete information. It was probably first breath before, just after meeting open.
In the more detailed document, it says, "The denial was unlawful as follows." And this piece here, towards the bottom of that. So that, they argue there that the existing lot has no drainage, and maybe in the setback are matters of site plan regulation not for consideration by the zoning board of adjustment? And that's untrue, right? Like, we, it does, it actually is under consideration for us.
Well, it certainly is under consideration by the planning board.
Well, it's a consideration for us, too, because we were supposed to say that it's of adequate size. And, you know, you need some measurements and numbers to make that decision.
What do you think?
I have a lot of thoughts. I think we asked at the first meeting, Joseph, we asked, was, is it Gould Street, Gould Ave, Gould Terrace, Gould something?
Gould Terrace, yes.
Gould Terrace.
And that is a public way?
It is, that's correct.
Of what size? Do you know?
I'm not sure of the width of the right-of-way through there. There may be some information on the survey that was done for the South Main Street project, but it's a very old road, and sometimes knowing the exact width is a little tough. But I'm not sure offhand how big that right-of-way is.
Well, so access is my first concern, just because Gould, I drove out there again today, the second time. I went last time before the meeting, and went again today. And currently, today, right now, if you drive down Gould, it is barely maintained as one way. Barely. And I suspect, without the snowbanks, we'd probably see pavement the full width of whatever the right-of-way is, literally from building foundation to other building foundation. So, in terms of public safety and the threat to public safety, access is something that should be concerned. It could, should be a concern. And so Gould, while it may have been adequate at one time for single-family homes, as the area was, you know, converted... Yeah, transformed from a single-family home to multifamily, provisions, what would normally be off-site improvements, such as roadway improvements, probably wouldn't, well, without seeing the survey, I don't want to make too many comments, but it's, I'm sure it's geometrically limited, given its available area. And I'll define that area as its width. So, does it have adequate width to provide safe access in all seasons? So that's my first concern and thought. Drainage is also a concern. Surface material is a concern. Turn radius is a concern. Effective, excuse me, adequate dimensional requirements, even if it were one way or a reduced way. Again, I put my car directly behind a car that was parked there at an angle. So angular parking has different geometric requirements, as does 90 or parallel. And that's all spelled out in our site plan regulations. Anyway, there was limited space, and I'll define limited as, basically, I could just walk by, between the snowbank, my car, and the car that was there. And that car was parked nearly up against a, an attempt of a wood guardrail that is also approaching failure. And I'll define failure as its angle of declination. Because it sits on a very steep slope. And steep slopes are defined also in our regulations. And I, it doesn't take a survey to, when you can't see the toe of the slope, it's very steep. So that speaks to, you know, if we had a site plan, if we had a survey plan, we could indeed, as you said, Tom, convey, or clearly depict where are the property boundaries, pins or lines? How does that relate to the steep slopes? What is an adequate shoulder to maintain safe access or to install a guardrail? Then two, how does that relate to access and turning movements for not only one row of parking, but also access into and out of that, those spaces? I believe the applicant's further testimony said substantial number of cars parking. I think that is a probably improper adjective there.
Embellishment.
Yeah. Call it grossly underutilized as a parking lot.
Right.
It'd be there.
So there are any number of things. In addition, right now, in our current winter conditions, the stairs that they would access is unmaintained. The parking lot, upper parking lot to what was the bank, now the medical, is unmaintained. Down at the lower level, matter of fact, they plowed up against the stairs. So further difficulty maintain. Now, that clearly says to me that they're not using the upper parking lot, but that they not only are not using themselves, but they don't intend to have anybody else use it.
At least this year.
At least, correct, at least for this year.
When they came to us last year, they said that that was their plan, but they're obviously not at that yet.
Yeah.
As I look at the minutes, everything that I've heard is in the minutes of our last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, as a board member, I felt, I'm very comfortable saying that we, as a board, I think, went above and beyond last month in discussing their application, which was incomplete, and discussing the merits of both special exception and variance, and the explanation thereof. I think we went above and beyond and discussed findings of facts. I mean, we treated it, you know, as if it were complete, because they were here, and we, you know, respected their time. And so if they were to return with a completed application and adequate supportive information so that we could, as a board, evaluate it on its merit, given the conditions we have, would we find, or would we make, would we have different findings? In other words, we denied, obviously, but do you, do we feel there would be a different outcome? And...
That's a good question.
Yeah, I, without that information, obviously, I could not make that assertion. But given the location and its physicality, I think it will be exceptionally challenging for them to produce the adequate amount of supportive information to clearly and unequivocally meet each of the criteria, not only for special exception, but also variance.
The, I look at item number 3, as you folks have pointed out, as an admission, this application is incomplete.
Yeah, yeah.
If you read it, like...
It is, yeah.
That's, they're admitting it was incomplete. What do you think?
Then they have seemed to have done some work, right? If you look at 2B and 2C, you know, after the fact, addressing some of our concerns. The access to the existing parking area is by way of a set of stairs over third-party property, and the owner of the third-party property has acknowledged and authorized the applicant's use thereof for access. And then the occupants of 42 Main Street previously parked in the area of Railroad Square, which recently received approvals, which incorporated these previously used spaces for property needs at Railroad Square, notwithstanding the long-time usage and possible continuing usage by 42 Main Street, leaving 42 Main Street without legal parking spaces. A significant hardship to the owner of 42 Main Street.
The zoning one, though, aren't you? You're looking at the variance one, aren't you?
Oh, yes, I am.
Stick to the...
Sorry.
Stick to the special exception.
Special exception first, okay. Thank you.
So I guess the question is, what do we want to do? They're acknowledging they didn't have the right stuff. The planner has told me he gave them the same information he gives everybody else who comes before our board. Here's the application, here's the things that you need, and so forth. I don't see anything wrong with what we did.
One clarification request for me. The item 1 of the special exception, at the end, that the decision was unlawful in that the board must make specific findings as to whatever was presented, and it failed to do so.
Yeah.
What requirements?
Well, we make a decision, we're supposed to make findings of fact.
Which we did.
And we, well, we did in the variance. There's no question we did in the variance. And a special exception, we, what we said was, we don't have enough information to make findings of fact. Our minutes show that we discussed it in detail.
Because we, I see. Because the special exception would be known, mute of the denial on the variance?
Yes. Just have the two parts. So you keep looking at special exception, but the variance had a steep hill decline, too. And that would be nice if we could get... And that would be nice if we could get a letter, I guess, but it's, you know, that's, we're not supposed to be misogynist applications like this. You know, reconsidering, reconsidering. I mean, that, it, we didn't do anything unlawful. That, we did our homework. I feel fine that we should, you know, just kind of let this go. This is, that didn't work either. You know, it's a method of the plan with no detail to it and said, oh, yeah, we'll just tuck eight cars in here. And now we're saying, you know, we'll give us a rehearing and we'll bring back the information we wanted. I mean, what are we setting ourselves up for there? Well, we don't have enough information. You want to extend the hearing? It's like, you know, isn't, isn't, so this isn't a commercial use that would immediately trigger the plant, the planning board, the site plan, because it's two single families, right?
Yes, so the single, single-family homes don't require site plan review.
Oh, right.
Single-family homes don't require site plan review. As far as, it's a,
You don't think they have to cut, go to the planning boards to create a parking lot?
The parking facility, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a good question. I don't have the answer right now as far as whether, you know, that would be a change of use as per the applicability criteria in the site plan review regulations. You know, the site plan regulations do have, you know, the criteria for changes of use, you know, within the same zoning district to different uses, as well as, you know, non-one or two-family development. So commercial, multifamily, three or more. And those were, the applicability standards were just changed somewhat. So certain, you know, certain changes of use do require a site plan review. As far as whether this one would require site plan review under the regulations, I would, I would have to, I would have to look.
With the planning board meeting that I went to, they seemed to think that off-site parking required site plan review. Did you hear it differently?
And that could be, I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to look.
That ought to occur before the special exception. I mean, that's the message that I was given, I believe.
Some, we, I know there have been, you know, in the, in the past, you know, approvals. There have been cases where either the zoning board has approved something with a condition of it going to the planning board or the planning board has approved with a condition of it. I know that has occurred.
That's a problem, yeah, I understand that.
I sometimes though feel like applications at least had like a clear plan, right? With a commitment to the,
I agree.
The rules, right, that everybody has to follow.
What would you, what would you feel about the fairness of having a rehearing or not?
Oh, it's fine with me. I mean, I really like to bend over backwards for the applicant, but I don't, I don't see this. That they don't, they didn't have this. I mean, we didn't even get a, the tax map, we have no meets and bounds. You've got to import eight cars up to these two little, are they half-acre lots or quarter-acre lots? What are they?
So would you be against a rehearing?
What?
Would you be against us offering a rehearing on this matter?
Well, I think, yeah, I think we should deny the rehearing. It's not, I mean, I'll make a motion if you want. I don't see any other choice here. That's, we're not, that's not what our function is, is to, you know, to tell them that we don't understand this, go get more information. I mean, they could have said that at the time, they could have opened it up and asked, you know, what you thought about the information we had, but it didn't. Meeting just went on, and it closed down, and then we go to look at it and we go, whoa. Look at, we don't have, and nope, it's,
You want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we decline the rehearing.
On the special exception?
On the special, this is just one.
On the special exception.
We got two?
Yeah, then we got to look at the variance as well.
Oh, I see, I thought you were, they were going both together. Yeah, on the special exception.
I'll second.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have we consulted the town attorney?
I have spoken to him about this. He has not, I have not gotten a recommendation from him of yes or no, the board should or shouldn't, you know, but he did speak to, you know, it's, it's the board's role in this process to read the specific claims put forth by the, the motion and determine if those are persuasive, if they feel that there's adequate grounds to grant a rehearing. And if, you know, if the board grants a rehearing, then, you know, it would be treated as a sort of a fresh hearing for it at that time. It's not, there's not a requirement for public hearing at a rehearing such as this. As well, granting a rehearing doesn't necessarily mean a change in decision. It could or could not, but have not had.
The attorney didn't have any guidance one way or the other?
He did not, no.
Why should he stick his neck out?
Because he's representing the town? Yes, hello.
Okay.
That's what.
We have a motion and a second.
Because it could save the town money in the long run?
On the special exception. Are you ready to vote on that? Any other questions? All in favor of the denial of the special exception rehearing, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. All right, let's move on to the second issue that they raised.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, may I read something from the site plan regulations?
Please do, yeah.
So for the board's information, I'm an alternate on the planning board as well as a member here of the ZBA, if you weren't unaware. So I always keep the regulations with me. So right here, page two, in the site plan review regulations, under scope of review, whenever any development of site governed by these regulations is proposed or whenever any changes are proposed, which differ from the existing site plan as previously approved by the planning board, before any construction, land clearing, building development, change is begun, before any land use permit for the erection of any building and da-da-da can be granted, this is some other language, but then it goes on to say, "Site plan review shall be required for the following non-residential or multifamily projects." Number one, any change in use of a site or structure within the 100-year floodplain. Number two, expansion of use of a site or structure such there is significant effect on the quantitative or qualitative requirements of these regulations or the zoning ordinance. Goes on to say, "Physical expansions, structure larger than 100 square feet." Now, that's primarily related to building, which they're not doing, but modifications to previously approved site plans. So I feel in this, in section three, so it's, it's one, two, and three. So authority, purpose, and then scope of view on page two, within this opening paragraph in four bullets, there are numerous references to change in use. And although these are, or once were, single-family homes, they are no longer used in that capacity. So to add off-site parking is definitely in the purview of site plan regulations by the planning board. There should be a site plan application so that the planning board and its, and the municipal review engineer, if necessary, does indeed go through their checklist and their findings of facts for all the dimensional requirements, stormwater, grading, all of the above. So you spin that back to what we did last month and what we're considering here. I have complete confidence that we are doing the correct thing. And I stand by my previous denial and signi, and following communicate, yes, communications we're going to have regarding the variance when we did present findings of facts and we did go through everything. So you were right in your assertions earlier. I think it's very clear in the regulations that they should, they, any applicant with a change of use and off-site parking should begin with the planning board in terms of dimensionals, see if that'll fly, and then pursue special exception and/or variance as needed or as applicable for each specific application, one at a time. I mean, and as you also said, David, it does say in the regulations that pre-application meetings are, you know, highly recommended.
They do, they do informational ones.
Yeah. So.
We don't do those.
Right.
Excellent, thank you.
If anybody would like to read them, I'd gladly pass them along.
It makes sense to me, anyway. You want to read it?
No.
I'd ask people to get out the thing that says a request for a rehearing of the denial of the variance.
The variance.
They claim that it's unlawful. Now, you've got to remember, as Tom pointed out at the meeting, any one of the five criteria isn't met, the variance is denied. So it isn't a matter of five for five. It's any one of the criteria aren't met. So let's start with, contrary to the public interest. We had a lot of talk about that at our meeting, and our minutes show that. There is, there is one finding on page two of the four that they've put forward, which I think is a little ambiguous. Find it out, it's item number three. 42 Main Street does not have sufficient parking for the number of people residing there. That's their assertion.
Which one is that, is that?
On page two of four, on the variance request, we found a fact, the property, 42 Main Street, does not have sufficient parking for the number of people residing there.
My variance only has.
You're in the minutes, aren't you?
Are you in the minutes? Page two of four, okay, he's in the minutes. Number three, the property at 42 Main Street does not have sufficient parking for the number of people residing there, yes. That is an assertion that they made. There is an alley, but I don't know that they own that alley. And I don't think they have any parking for the building.
We don't know that, yeah. They didn't provide a plan of it either.
No. They just told us that.
That there's no parking requirement in that zone.
That a building has to have parking.
Right. So they don't have to have parking to be there. And it never has had, if, if there's no parking now, it never has been. Okay, let's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to digress like that. They say the denial was unlawful as follows. The proposed variance was contrary to the public interest because the ordinance limits the distance to 300 feet as merely a recitation of the ordinance without consideration the legal standards of the proposed use being the existing underutilized parking lot. That conflates the two things. In my view. Because there's a parking lot which may be underutilized, that should change the 300-foot measurement. I, I don't understand why those two have anything to do with one another.
I don't know that they do. I don't know that I fully know the logic behind the 300 feet.
Well, it might not have some logic behind it, but, you know, that wasn't the only reason. I mean, personally, I felt that, you know, bringing another eight cars in there. I went down there before on the last meeting, and I, it was like eight cars around there. And, you know, put another eight cars down there, I just think that's such an impact.
Well, they're probably parking there already.
Huh?
They're probably parking there already.
We can, we can guess
Yes.
what the 300-foot thing was all about. I, my belief was that when they created the zoning ordinance, they knew that Main Street didn't have adequate parking, so they wanted to create a way in which the people on Main Street could get some parking off-site. And they, they looked at 300 feet, and said, that's 100 yards, that's a rational number. Now, was it scientifically determined? Probably not. Does that make it against public interest? I don't see that. Maybe you do.
Well, the 300-foot bears no case, bears no fair and substantial relationship to the purpose of the ordinance, which is to ensure a distance for principal use to its parking. I disagree, just make it a fact. Yeah, well, it's all pretty subjective, quite truthfully.
Well, we pointed out more than just the 300 feet. We pointed out the belief that it would be contrary to the public interest for safety, access, drainage, concerns, as well as the 300 feet. Wasn't just the 300 feet, was those other issues as well. The second issue is there's no hardship. And as you recall, when we have it in the minutes, the hardship was they wanted to sell the building.
In this one here, they say that 42 Main Street is a pre-existing multifamily apartment building without parking on site. So a pre-existing, like, pre-existing their ownership, pre, like, what do they mean exactly by that term being there?
If it pre-existed the zoning ordinance.
Pre-existed the zoning ordinances.
And my understanding was it used to be a store on the bottom floor and an apartment above it.
One apartment.
Makes a lot more sense than.
Especially if it was just one apartment, right? And I think that it was broken up, and I think it's three.
It was broken up, I looked at it on Zillow or whatever.
They made three apartments up there.
Yeah.
So it didn't preexist as that, it's been converted.
Correct.
Yeah, one, one.
Understanding.
Maybe legally, maybe illegally, we don't know, but that's what is there now.
So that house up there on two and four Gold Terrace, right, the two places, if they were, I mean, this is part of the heart of the question, right? Is if they were to have a parking lot up there, how many could they fit? And that was really missing from their application. And, but they argue here that two and four Gold Terrace currently already exists and is grossly underutilized as a parking lot. And I feel like that's really hard to assess that because we just didn't have the information, nor do we still have the information to assess that.
From memory, from memory, there was a number of 12 spots listed on the original application, which I don't have in front of me, but 12 stands out. And after driving down there, similar to Peter, it was tight. I, I can't imagine getting 12. I remember looking at it and thinking 12, absolutely, I mean, no way, was my first impression.
Well, I point out to you, they don't have to have any parking.
Down below, but he's talking about up.
Again, you're right, down below.
In the commercial.
42 Main Street.
Yeah, that's, on 42 Main Street.
Right.
But he's talking about that.
The three apartments of the.
It was hard to visualize a parking area and bringing in eight more cars into that crowded neighborhood. That was, that neighborhood is crowded.
Which I think has been spoken about that lot, that parking area, if it was actually zoned and intended as a parking area or if it was just, people started parking there and became a parking lot.
Exactly.
If you look at the lot plan, that's exactly what it looks like.
And that's what it looks like, looking at it from a layman's eye and not having the background of the, of the site plan or whatnot, so.
And we do.
The tax map suggests exactly what you're saying.
And last point that I'll, you, you just brought it up, is the hardship was the selling of it. So to your other point, not having parking available is, is the hardship for selling it.
Makes it less valuable.
Not that they're, it makes it less sellable. And though by law they are not required to have the, the spots, the parking lots, spot, spaces for that zone, from a seller's standpoint, that's the challenge. Sorry to hold you up, Peter.
They make the claim that, where did I see it? Just a moment here. Just a moment here. Hardship, concluding that this hardship is a financial hardship and therefore not a real hardship, whereas a matter of law, financial hardship may indeed be a lawful hardship. I can read you the information from the planning guide that we all got, and it has to be property-related, not money-related. I, there's no question in my mind, it's more difficult to sell without parking.
It's true. I was only going to say that I know that we've, a lot of other applications that have come before us over the years, we've, we've turned down, right, for large parking lots over the number of occupants, right? So I think it's important to be fair and consistent and hold to the ordinances.
They, they conflate the special exception and the variance together all the way through this, and they really are two separate things, although it's hard...
There were two separate hearings.
It's hard to separate them out in your mind.
It is.
It is.
Yes, Peter.
Joseph, are we permitted to ask you to basically do some homework?
With regards to what?
Can you, is it a difficult task or request to ask you to research, do additional municipal specific permit research on two and four and 42? In other words, the three properties referenced in both the variance and the special, special exception. And my questions are this: When were they converted to essentially multifamily from single-family? And were there any, what is the permit trail, if any? And then secondarily, simply using either the GIA system we have or Google Earth, when was that likely gravel access drive widened and converted to what the applicant terms as a pre-existing parking lot?
Yeah, I have not been able to determine any of that at this time based on our permit records.
So you have done some research?
I have looked. Two and four Gold Terrace did not ever go through a site plan review, the two houses there.
Yeah.
There's, there are some building permits in the file, but nothing that I saw that confirmed one way or the other with having a detailed site sketch. So as far as those two, and I'm, I'm not aware of when exactly that gravel drive did become that. I have looked, as you mentioned, back in some historic aerials on Google Earth and haven't really been able to, to precisely determine that. The tree cover there makes it, makes it difficult.
Sure.
But, yeah, I, based, there are, I can confirm that based on the review of the files that we do have in our land use permitting, there, there are no site plans, at least for...
To save this thing, but it, it isn't saving itself. I mean, it's just, and this idea about grossly underutilized, you can't keep saying that. He keeps quoting this, "A grossly underutilized parking lot." What does that mean? How are you, how can you show that?
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's like a rumor that they're starting.
So we're still on 1B, right? Just bringing us back to focus here.
Let's take them in order and see if we can just go...
I think it's good to go in order.
If we can just go through these. We've decided that the public interest, it is against the public interest to do this, and part of it had to do with, Peter talked about the distance, they needed to cross, the fact that we know they're going to cross private property. People will come and go. That's against the public interest.
They do address that, though, in 2B.
In 2B.
2B. We'll get there.
And we'll get there.
The public just put the parking area up there. I mean, they've got to show that they've got these spaces.
Okay.
It just goes right back to the...
I also think in the public interest, holding everybody to the same rules.
I think, that's what I said.
I think that is in the public interest, because if we let somebody fill out the rules, then we have to let everybody fill out the rules. And why have the rules?
I think because they admitted that the hardship was that they wanted to sell the property. It was not property-related, it was money-related. You know, there's a price at which it would sell without parking, and it may not be the same price at which it would sell with parking.
The property doesn't deserve a variance just because you want to get the money for it.
Right. Exactly. Substantial justice. Did, did, do we grant variances to other people for the same reason? Not that I'm aware of. That's a fair, it's a fairness issue. When we asked, "How far would people have to go if they went along the streets?", it got up to 900 feet or something like that.
I don't know if I follow C.
C?
Yeah. That's the one we're talking about, right?
Yep. I, I think what they're talking about there is not having parking at the property may crowd Main Street maybe? And that's against the public interest?
Oh, okay. That's a leap.
Or against justice where other people get off-site parking? They've got off-site parking now, they claim.
Well, they do, and they probably do.
Well, they have the Railroad Square, but that's being removed from them, or potentially they might be able to use it.
They're losing it, I think.
Yeah, they think they're losing it, so they're looking for...
They want to hold it for a different property.
Yeah.
Or whatever. All right. Can we say the substantial justice is done? The fairness is, okay. D is the spirit of the ordinance. We found in favor of that one, as I recall.
Character of the neighborhood, what looks like. I would agree, the ordinance doesn't define whether it's by the crow flies or walking, but you would have to think, I would think, that it was based on walking.
Until humans can fly, I think we have to assume they're going to walk.
Yep. Use a battery-operated scooter.
Down those stairs, sounds like fun. Yeah.
And the last one.
Two and three, we still have four, too.
Two. One, two, three, four.
Just because it already exists, you know, like, we, we've held, we have, we have not allowed other properties in town to get a variance for parking, just because they've had it in the past and because they've used it that way.
And again, in number three, they're acknowledging that they didn't give us all the information that would help us make a decision about, about the parking area.
Which one do you want here?
B and C, two.
This one here?
Yeah.
One for three, or you just have to...
So C, B is that they got permission from the owners to use that, like, walk through the stairs. But then, and then for here, this is the issue of Railroad Square and how they're losing some of the spots there.
Yeah, I mean, if you...
And recently received approvals, approvals from who?
Yeah, and there isn't any approval that we see. Here again, they just were supposed to take his word for something that's pretty serious.
I mean, have there been any recent approvals by?
Well, no. From 2C, it's saying that somebody approved without taking into consideration the long time usage at Railroad Square, but did, did the zoning board have approval for something at Railroad Square recently?
We did view that property, right?
No, he's saying that he's developing further Railroad Square, and that now he doesn't, he doesn't have room for these...
You're losing whatever they got down there.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with this case.
He, he did come before us recently, right? Do you remember what it was, which case it was, anybody? It wasn't, was it that one that came before us?
There was a, some years ago, I, you know, before my time with the town, there was an approval given for a couple of apartment buildings on Railroad Square. I believe that's what's being referred.
That's his building, yep.
Development down there.
That's, that's my...
Yeah, they renovated it or something, yes.
That's the only one that I'm aware of offhand, is those, those apartment buildings that were some number of years ago, and I'm not, I don't know the details of those approvals offhand, but I would imagine that's what's being referred.
The buzz you said they listened to that? The D and A, do they say anything really different? It's just that it's reasonable.
So the ultimate question here is, do you believe our record, what we wrote and what we have as minutes substantiates our decision, so that our decision doesn't look like it's arbitrary?
I don't think it is.
I do.
You think it is, Peter?
I do.
Yeah, our record's complete. I don't think it's arbitrary.
All right. I'll await a motion on that, a request for a rehearing.
I'll do the last one there.
I just want to finish reading these last if I can.
I'll make the motion to deny it.
Seconded?
I'll second it.
Tom seconds it. Okay. Any further discussion necessary? All right. All in favor of denying the motion for a rehearing, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No opposition, it's unanimous.
This is what we used to call them.
Did anybody abstain? No abstentions, yeah. Well, thank you very much. Let me check the agenda, make sure what else we might have.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on the agenda? I've lost one.
I think I have mine.
No, I do have one piece of other business.
Okay.
Just to advise quickly that I did provide an updated membership list of the board. There are a few members whose terms are expiring in April of this year. The, you know, the process through that, as you've been through, is, you know, just a quick letter to the select board if you would like to request a reappointment. And it's, you know, you can, you can send that to myself, and I can provide that to the select board. Terms do end in April, so ideally, you know, we want to try and get that appointment to the select board in March or sometime around then, but just wanted to make everybody aware that that was, you know, on the horizon, not necessarily right away, but it, it is coming up for those who, who do need reappointment.
Yeah, I'm one of them, and I'll let you know. I put my name in for water and sewer, so if I go on that, it wouldn't, probably wouldn't continue more of this.
That's a hotly contested spot.
I know.
I do have some more business. Hang on just a second.
You've got more business?
Yeah, I do.
I told my wife this is going to be 20 minutes...
It is. I'm going to be out of here in five minutes.
It's the State of the Union at eight. Such an exciting life I live.
Can't find what I'm looking for. I got this gorgeous certificate from the state.
For your test?
It says I passed.
Oh, great.
I, I went, I got to tell you this, I went in for the one where you disclose who you are. It's not the questions we saw. It's much more difficult.
Thanks for the heads up.
Oh, really? And if you want to see the questions, I've, I've got them, and I can hand them to you.
Hey, that's great. That's how I got my boat license.
Stop it. Come on, gentlemen.
But I was, I was some surprise when pops the first three questions in, I'm saying, I've seen a thing like this before in my life.
Well, how'd you do?
I passed.
Yay.
I would have been really embarrassed if I failed, but I can tell you, I didn't get them all.
But you could take it again.
Oh, you could take as many times as you want.
So then they sent you a certificate, huh?
They did. Write that in there, online.
I think it's good. I think we should have another one of those education. I would just love to participate in the next one there. I didn't get to say what I want to say.
Ah, there it is. Yeah.
There it is.
Oh.
Look at that.
Look at that.
I told you I'd do it in January, okay? January 31st. I said to the judge, I said, "I promised the board I'd do it, and I got to go do it."
How long did it take?
How long did it take? Oh, 45 minutes.
Okay.
Because you had to look at it. You had, the questions are poorly written. I mean, you're in education, you understand what a good quiz is.
Yeah. I could tell that some of them were very poorly written when we just were here in the room. Yeah, read in the practice ones, yeah.
So, okay, well, I thank you folks for tonight.
It's hard to write a good, this is a new thing, though, right, for the state to give out this certificate, right, and for this exam?
Yeah, they're trying to make believe we know what we're doing.
So they might eventually update the test.
Yeah.
Very possible.
Yeah.
Apologies, I neglected to mention this at the last piece of other business that I gave, but at the last planning board meeting, the planning board did discuss the possibility of another joint meeting.
Yes.
If the board is interested. They have a pretty heavy schedule with some of the housing opportunity grant meetings coming up, but they, they were thinking sometime in May, or for the May, either at the time of their meeting or at the time of the zoning board's meeting for May, as a, as a good time in their schedule for that.
Okay. That'd be, May would be okay with me.
Okay.
Others?
It's fine.
Depends what night it is, yeah.
Yeah, it really does.
Tom, you've got to have stick, you've got to stick on here, you know?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to talk to these fresh members. That's, it's, it's fun. I wrote down a couple things, too, but you just don't get... Anyhow, you going to take a motion or adjourn?
Is it a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very sound, thank you.